Good evening. My name is Sid Espinoza. I'm honored to moderate this event tonight. For those of you who know me, you know that I am not typically one for scripts, but we want to make sure that we go to the letter and that we don't show any bias. So I will be reading these first opening remarks. "I want to thank PAN for organizing this important conversation. It's critical that we hear from and learn about our candidates for public office. And I applaud PAN for creating a forum where those views can be shared." Here's the format for this evening. First, each candidate will be given one minute to provide an opening statement. We have a timekeeper who will inform us when there's 15 seconds remaining and the gavel will sound when the minute is up. Throughout the evening, the candidates will have one minute to answer each question. We realize that one minute is a very short period of time and we will be discussing complex issues, but we have many candidates and we want to be sure that we have time to hear from each of them. So candidates, when you hear that gavel, please complete your sentence and stop talking so I'm not forced to cut you off, because I will cut you off. Also note that there is no banking of time. That is, any time that you don't answer a question using your full amount of time, that will not be carried over to another question or to your closing statement. Thank you. After the opening remarks, we have a series of questions that have been prepared by PAN. Several candidates will answer each question before we move on to the next one. Not every person will be answering every question, but each candidate will be allowed to answer six questions. PAN's leadership has sought to create questions around issues of importance to citizens all across Palo Alto's neighborhoods. To be clear, I have not written, edited, or reviewed these questions prior to yesterday, nor have I assigned questions to particular candidates. I am simply the moderator, and to the best of my knowledge, none of the candidates are aware of any of the questions. After these prepared questions, we will transition to questions from you, the audience. There are blank cards on your seats for your questions. Our monitors will collect those cards, and they will be sorted by PAN's leadership and read as time allows. We will collect your questions until 8:00 PM. To be clear, there will be no direct questions from the floor. All questions will be submitted via cards on your seats. After audience questions, each candidate will be given one minute for closing remarks. This event will end promptly at 9:00 PM. Audience, we ask your indulgence. Please stay until the end of the forum. It is disruptive when people leave early, especially because this forum is being telecast live. The candidates will stay after the event if you'd like to talk with them and if you'd like to discuss things further. Finally, and this is critically important, we want every candidate to feel comfortable expressing their views and speaking frankly. To this end, please refrain from applauding, booing, or expressing any other reaction to candidate's statements. Again, no applauding, no booing, et cetera. Thank you. Please also note that candidates John Carl Frederick and Danielle Martel have declined to participate in this forum. Now let's get started with one-minute opening statements. The order has been randomly selected, beginning with Leonard Ely. Mr. Ely?
Good evening. Thanks for coming. I'm fairly new to the city council race. I am a longtime Palo Alto resident, as was my father and my grandmother. I've watched city politics all my life. I was born and raised here and went to the same schools that my father and actually my grandmother didn't because they weren't built yet. I believe that I can bring to the city council a different vision, not clouded by being, I guess, being endorsed by a lot of people, and I'm looking forward to being able to work with the current city council and try to move us forward and not study things so much and make more decisions. I hope you all can vote for me. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Greer Stone.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My roots in this community are deep. My mother, Janice Stone, is a teacher at Aloney Elementary School. My father proudly served the Stanford Sheriff's Department for over 30 years. We weren't wealthy, but I was blessed with the opportunity to attend schools in Palo Alto. I am the chairman of the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission. I am an attorney, and I am running for city council because I want to make sure that the city's decisions reflect the will of the public. I will focus on policies that matter most to you, policies that actually decrease traffic, not just mitigate it. I will prioritize housing for those who need it most, our teachers, our police officers, and those of us living in poverty, rather than more office development that only exacerbates our housing costs and traffic woes. And I will protect our retail and expand opportunities for new stores to thrive in our city. Thank you so much.
Next, Liz Niss.
Good evening, everyone. It's really good to see you. I love serving in this city, and as most of you know, I'm the only incumbent, so I'd like to continue this. My background is on the school board, on the city council, and I also served on the Board of Supervisors of Santa Clara County. That has given me a regional perspective that I think is really important for this particular council. I'm the only one that has that regional experience, and currently I do serve on four regional boards, including one that I'm currently vice chair of, which is the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, so that during the day you can look out and see a beautiful blue sky instead of the kind of sky you would see if you lived in China. It's an enormous privilege to get to serve on the city council. It is very important that you differentiate us tonight, and we'll continue to do that as we go along. Thank you.
Lydia Koo.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Koo. My husband and I have lived in Palo Alto for 18 years and raised our two daughters here. Palo Alto is still the greatest community in the Bay Area to raise a family. Being a longtime volunteer in this community has been a privilege. I spent many years as a leader of the Emergency Preparedness Committee in my neighborhood and then taking the program citywide. I've served on PTAs and chaired programs to help seniors age at home. I have commendation from two former mayors, including the moderator of this forum, Mayor Espinoza, and in 2012, I was Palo Alto Weekly's Person of the Year. This is the spirit and dedication I want to bring with me to city council. I know from experience how much expertise and energy residents have to offer, even though sometimes it can feel hard to get City Hall to respond. Residents are the heart and soul of this community, and I hope that you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Arthur Keller.
Thank you, Mayor Espinoza and PAN for hosting this event, and thank you all for being here. I want Palo Alto government to be the best it can be. I founded my neighborhood association to give it a voice in developments proposed for East Meadow Circle. I served on the Planning and Transportation Commission for eight years, and I'm currently co-chair on the Citizens Advisory Committee on the Comprehensive Plan Update. I still serve as transit coordinator for Gunn High School, even though my daughter's graduated several years ago. Palo Alto has an interim speed limit on growth, office growth, that I support extending. New housing should promote diversity with more affordable housing for the most vulnerable who are being priced out of the market because of the growth of jobs. We need housing for seniors and for families, considering school capacity and class size. I support protecting local-serving businesses and retail. I started a petition that helped save the City Arts Theater, and I'm a proven leader getting positive results for our residents. Thank you.
Don McDougall.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am currently vice chair of the Library Commission and serve on the Comprehensive Plan Commission. I believe that I have the leadership, excuse me, and partnership experience to achieve my goal of a smart, sustainable city. What I mean by sustainable city is not simply the environment. I'm an active member of environmental volunteers, but the economy, and the economy for local retail and the economy for the innovative partners that we have in the community. And the third part of a sustainable Palo Alto is the people, the people and in fact the neighborhoods that make this an interesting place to be. I look forward to serving you in the future, and thank you very much.
Stuart Carl.
Good evening. I grew up in suburban Philadelphia, surrounded by the horse farms of Samuel Riddle. After graduating from high school, I moved to LA where I studied transportation design and earned a degree in industrial design. One year later, I found myself on another horse farm, working towards a master's degree in mechanical engineering. After graduating from Stanford, I worked all over Silicon Valley and rented all over Palo Alto, before becoming a self-employed product development consultant and settling in for the last 20 years in College Terrace. There, I joined other residents working to integrate Stanford's massive Mayfield project and Facebook's headquarters into our neighborhood and witnessed the broken planning and parking process firsthand. In 2013, I began educating myself and the community about the FAA's noisy next-gen flight pass and co-founded Sky Posse. Thank you for hosting this event, PAN.
Adrian Fine.
Thank you very much to PAN and to our former Mayor Espinoza for hosting and moderating tonight. My name is Adrian Fine. I'm a native of Palo Alto, currently chair of the city's Planning Commission, and also a member of the Citizens Advisory Commission for the Comprehensive Plan Update. In my day job, I work at Nextdoor.com, the social network for neighborhood, where I have the opportunity to help connect neighborhoods across the country. On city council, I will be a thoughtful, pragmatic, and balanced leader who works with residents and other stakeholders to solve our big problems, namely traffic, parking, and housing issues. I have a professional and educational experience in planning and transportation finance. I used to work for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission in Oakland on planning finance issues and working with regional partners around the Bay Area to make sure that we serve everybody. I've lived in Palo Alto for 30 years. My fiance and I want to raise our family here. I have deep respect for our history and for our neighborhoods, and I would truly appreciate your support to make sure that we, as Palo Alto, can solve our problems in only the way that we know how to do. Thank you so much.
I want to thank the PAN organization for inviting us. I actually used to be part of PAN. I was the president of the College Terrace Residents Association. My wife and I moved here in 2004. It was a struggle to actually move to Palo Alto. It was very expensive. We outbid everyone to get our house, and what made it all worth it was, the first week we were there, all the neighbors came over to welcome us. And I see some of the neighbors here in the audience, and I'm most appreciative of that, and I think that's what makes Palo Alto Palo Alto. I'm currently the longest-serving member of the Planning and Transportation Commission. I was chair last year. I've also served on the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission. We looked at infrastructure challenges inside the city. And I was also in the Escanito PTA. And when I was president of the College Terrace Residents Association, we did several big programs. One of them was the very first residential permanent parking program, and a lot of the members in this audience has helped with that. We also did traffic calming in College Terrace, which cut down and cut through streets, as well as worked on keeping grocery store in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Welcome, candidates. I just want to have a clarifying statement quickly for the audience members. If you are going to provide a question, please direct it to one or two of the candidates because we won't have all of them able to answer all questions. So list the names there on the back. We will now turn to the questions provided by PAN. The first are a series of questions related to development. The first question will be for Mr. McDougall, followed by Mr. Keller. The question is related to growth. To what degree should Palo Alto accommodate as many businesses and people who want to work and live here?
The question of growth is really part of the major challenge that we deal with. When we look at the comprehensive plan and you look at growth, we expect that there'll be something like 20,000 people that would be added to the population here at a growth rate of something like 1%. Is that a sustainable growth or an unsustainable growth? And that's what I come back to, is how do we look at growth in a sustainable way that allows us to manage it properly? We must provide a spectrum of housing and availability across all levels. We have to look at every different kind of housing that can be available. We have to consider affordable housing. We have to consider homeless housing. We have to consider cluster housing. We have to consider single-bedroom and studio housing. It's a concentrated regional effort that we have to participate in.
Mr. Keller, followed by Mr. Tanaka.
Could you repeat the question? I want to make sure that I actually answer it.
To what degree should Palo Alto accommodate as many businesses and people who want to work or live here?
Well, I think that we cannot accommodate all the businesses who want to be here and all the people that want to live here. There are other cities around, and the county of Santa Clara is actually investing some transportation dollars here. They're actually talking about taking away our bus service, but most of the development is happening around BART, so that's perhaps where a lot of the growth should go. I do think that we need to add more housing. We need to add housing, as I mentioned, for seniors who want to stay in our community. We need to add more housing, especially for families, in particular for our first responders, police and fire and utility workers who will need to be here in the event of an earthquake. And we need to also have smaller housing units because 60% of our households are one or two persons, and only 20% of our housing units are small units, but we can't accommodate everybody who wants to be here.
Mr. Tanaka, to be followed by Mr. Fine.
Well, I think the real answer here is that there are no easy answers. Certainly, there's a lot of pressure for growth. There's a lot of people that want to live here in Palo Alto, and actually, that means it's actually a good thing for us because it means that we actually have a very good city that people want to live and work. But I believe what's needed is a very balanced approach. I don't believe it's build man-hand. I don't believe it's nothing. It's something kind of in-between. So I think it's really what's important is community involvement. And so, because I came up through the College Terrace Neighbor Association, through PAN, I think that's really important to actually hear the community's voice, to hear the residents' voice about what's needed, what are some of the impacts, how do we make sure that we maintain the certain quality of life? And that's something that I've always done in my tenure from CTRA president to planning commission, Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission. I think really hearing the neighborhood is very, very important to making sure that we have projects that are compatible.
Mr. Fine, to be followed by Ms. Koo.
First, I think we have to admit, we cannot nor should we accommodate all the businesses and all the residents who want to live here. It's just not possible for our city. It's not possible for the Bay Area as a whole. What I do think is important is to think about the values that we hold dear as Palo Altans. Those are values such as efficiency, innovation, quality of life, and inclusiveness. And then we have to figure out how we maintain and improve those values for the future. So in some places, we are going to have to look at more housing choices and housing options. In other cases, we're going to have to work with our regional partners, such as Mountain View, Menlo Park, VTA, Caltrain, and make sure that we have a sustainable transportation system that can get folks to and from work, to and from home. Finally, we have to look at the services that current and future residents will need. So I don't think about it in terms of how much growth we can accommodate or how much we can push off to other cities. It's more about what kind of community do we want to be and how do we support those values?
Ms. Koo, to be followed by Mr. Ely.
Growth cannot outstrip what our community can accommodate. Our traffic and parking situation has been festering for quite a while now, and while innovation is great, but when technology and innovation deteriorates livability for its residents, then that is not a solution. So we will have to be, moving forward, disciplined and focused at what we really do want for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Ely, to be followed by Ms. Niss.
I think the question is a problem because all is such a global word. Obviously, that's never going to happen in any city. However, I think that Palo Alto has the ability to look at its growth situation and manage its growth, not short-term by changing laws and things like that that affect something immediately, but looking over the long term and planning for growth. Growth is going to happen. It has to happen. Our country continues to grow. Our state continues to grow. Our county continues to grow, and therefore, we will continue to grow. But it has to have a managed plan.
Ms. Niss, to be followed by Mr. Carl.
Thanks. So let me jump into this because I think I'm going to attack this from the commercial side. I've always supported affordable housing. I certainly support alternative kinds of housing, but I want to talk about our commercial development right now and what has happened over the past four years, essentially. In 2013 and 14, we developed about roughly 60,000 square feet in the designated area. Last year, we went 48,000 square feet. And this year, starting in March, which is the time when someone would apply who wants to add office R and D, we have had no applications whatsoever. That indicates that businesses themselves have decided that they're not going to expand here. It doesn't determine what happens with housing. It doesn't determine what happens with retail, but businesses have made a decision.
Mr. Carl, to be followed by Mr. Stone.
We definitely cannot accommodate all the businesses that want to be in Palo Alto, especially office-style businesses. They're way too highly leveraged. What do I mean by that? I mean that with a typical office worker now working in as little as 75 square feet and needing approximately 750 square feet to live in, we can't possibly build that much housing.
Mr. Stone.
Well, we can't build enough housing to meet the demand to live in one of the most desirable cities in the country to live in, but that's why we need to focus our housing on those who need it most. So let's focus our housing on teachers. We can partner with the school district to have housing for teachers and school staff on school property. Santa Clara has already done this. The Santa Mateo Community College District is doing it. We can too. We should also look into housing for police officers, first responders. I met with the president of the Palo Alto Police Officer Association last week. He was telling me that now Palo Alto pays their police officers around the median for the Bay Area. We're having a very difficult time recruiting the best of the best. He believes that housing would be one of the greatest ways that we could retain and recruit new police officers. And finally, I want to focus as well on those who need below-market-rate housing. Our current policy is about 15% of new developments need to have below-market rate. That should be increased to 25%. And we should get rid of those in-lu fees to actually require developers to build those. Thank you.
Continuing on the topic of development, we move now to office space growth. Our first question will be for Ms. Niss, followed by Mr. Tanaka. Do you support an annual or cumulative cap on office space? Or should the space be determined by performance measurements? Or both?
As you know, we currently have a cap on office space that will continue until next year unless the comprehensive plan is finished before then. It's an either-or. As far as should we have some kind of performance measure? I think that would be very desirable. At the moment, though, as I just mentioned a minute ago, there is nothing in the pipeline that is there either for measurement or for, as we said, if we needed to, after 50,000 square feet, we would make decisions based on a variety of other things, such as benefit to the community and so forth. As I see it at this point, I think we have sent a message. We may want performance measures for the future, but at the moment, I don't think we're going to see any development for a while in the office space and the R and D area.
Mr. Tanaka, to be followed by Mr. Fine.
Yeah, I also agree that performance measurements are really what's important because it's the impact that people are concerned about, not necessarily the office space itself. So performance measurements make a lot of sense, and I also have to agree on the planning commission, we haven't seen a lot of new office projects because of some of the situations. And I think the other thing that's really important is to make sure that retail is protected and promoted in Palo Alto so that the services that residents expect are there for them to have. Thank you.
Mr. Fine, to be followed by Mr. Ely.
Thank you. So as my colleague Commissioner Tanaka from the Planning Commission mentioned, we haven't seen any office projects in the Planning Commission, and when the office cap did come before us in the Planning Commission, we took some issue with it because it doesn't address the underlying issues which I think this community is feeling, issues such as traffic impacts and the lack of parking downtown in the Cali areas. It also didn't take into the fact that we do have many successful businesses where many Palo Altans or folks from out-of-town work, and they provide many Palo Altons or folks from out of town work, and they provide a lot of revenue for our services and our tax base. So what I'd like to see happen is for us to finish the comp plan so we have good controls over office development in Palo Alto. We also need to reinforce the programs that allow us to, to control the impacts we don't like. So we need to improve the RPP program. We need to support the city's Transportation Management Association, and also look at transportation demand measures for new and existing developments in the downtown core. Finally, we need to look at some of the existing developments which are going to happen. Stanford Hospital is about to come online, and we haven't done much there. Thank you.
Mr. Ely to be followed by Mr. Keller.
I think that the reason that you're not seeing offices being built in Palo Alto is the same reason that we are having a housing problem. It's the cost of land, the cost of building the building. And even though we have some of the highest rents in the country, it still does not make sense. And I, I think the other thing is, is that the requirements, some of the requirements that the city is putting on developers these days is also scaring them away.
Mr. Keller to be followed by Mr. Stone.
Well, Councilmember Niss pointed out that there hasn't been much development in the monitored areas, the specific areas under the cap. However, the Stanford Research Park is exempted from the cap and the vague hope that they somehow addressed the parking, the traffic issue. And unfortunately, a vague hope isn't worth, that promise isn't worth the paper it's not even written on. So I think what we need is actually to make a formal deal with the Stanford Research Park to reduce traffic based if they want to grow. Mr. Fine basically said that he was in favor of RPP, but on the Citizens Advisory Committee on the comp plan, he said that it wasn't the problem in college terrace. So I'm not sure whether, how he supports it. I actually think that we do need to deal with a cap because the comprehensive plan will be in effect for the next 15 years. And it might be slowing, the economy might be slowing down a little bit now, but some years from now, we know the economy will return to the go-go days again, and there will be excessive housing development, office development in the future.
Mr. Stone to be followed by Mr. McDougal.
I don't think we can properly address our housing and our traffic needs unless we actually address our office growth. And as Councilwoman Niss mentioned, that we do have a current office cap right now of 50,000 net new square feet. I would, I still, I support continuing that cap, strengthening that cap. Also, Stanford Research Park is exempt from that cap. And I believe that they can remain exempt as long as we condition that on one simple measuring tool. If by 2018, if Stanford Research Park can lower their traffic generated there to below today's current levels, then we can allow them. Stanford has the ability to address their traffic. Their TMA program that they have had at Stanford has been successful, and I believe that they can do it. But we should be able to offer the carrot and the stick to ensure that they continue to, to do that properly. Thank you.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. Once again, I think the question here is one of sustainability. I don't think we can sustain a city where we can turn on and off caps. I don't think we can have the confidence that we will always be growing and that even in the next, in the next 15 years. I think the other problem, by the way, relative to development and the fact that we haven't had applications, is the lack of predictability and the lack of confidence that, that the city and the developers will both, will both follow the rules. On the, on the CAC, I was a key advocate of the idea of development requirements rather than a cap. I'm quite happy to leave the cap in place during a transition period, but I think if we can move towards requirements for developers and measurements of our quality of life, we'll end up with a much more sustainable city. The other thing we need to do is really reinforce and support the TMA.
Another much discussed development issue in Palo Alto is our 50-foot height limit.
I don't think I had a chance to respond.
Not everyone will have a chance to respond to every question. So trust me, though, everyone will get to respond to six total. So once we get through the rounds, you'll get your chance.
Thank you.
And if there's a particular thing I should say that you want to respond to, of course, in closing statements, feel free to come back to that issue. As I was saying, 50-foot height limit is another much discussed issue in Palo Alto. Our next question will be directed first to Mr. Stone, followed by Mr. Carl. Projects are requesting to exceed the 50-foot height limit. If or when should this limit be exceeded?
I don't, I don't think it should be exceeded. I, I think the 50-foot height limit is one of the reasons why we have such an aesthetically pleasing town. I mean, it's one of it. Compatibility is very important. And a lot of times, I look around Palo Alto and some of our, unfortunately, some of our greatest eyesores oftentimes are the more, the high-rises we have. We've seen other communities, Redwood City, Mountain View, they're starting to build more and more high-rises, and they're really changing the atmosphere, the, the culture that they have within that city. I don't want to see Palo Alto get to that point. I definitely, I definitely support the 50-foot limit. And I mean, if it had to be 51, 52, okay, but other than that, let's, let's keep it at 50.
Mr. Carl to be followed by Ms. Koo.
Yeah, I also support the 50-foot height limit for the same reasons. It's one of the key aspects of our architecture that maintains the unique character of Palo Alto. And exceeding that would, for, for one building would, would create a precedent for another building to be even larger. So we need to maintain the 50-foot height limit.
Ms. Koo to be followed by Mr. Ely.
I too support retaining the 50-foot height limit. Greer, Stone has said it perfectly. We have a great city. It's very aesthetically pleasing, and we can see our green trees all around. And I certainly do not want to see sky towers all over the city of Palo Alto.
Mr. Ely to be followed by Mr. McDougal.
I am not in favor of the 50-foot height limit in downtown Palo Alto in the core on University Avenue. There's, this is a place that we could make denser and have affordable housing, possibly even housing that our first responders could live in and things like that. And so I think that, as in European cities, the density is around the core. That's where the vibrance is. That's where the people can walk and get to the train, that sort of thing. So the California Avenue, I would support it at California Avenue or throughout the rest of the city. But in the downtown core, I'd like to see more of a pyramid effect. Thank you.
Mr. McDougal.
I, I said in the start, and I've said in the comprehensive plan meetings, that we need to investigate all alternatives. And I think if going to five stories so that we could accommodate mixed use of retail on the bottom and maybe four floors of, of housing, including affordable housing, we should consider that. This is a regional problem. We see that some of the communities in our region, just, Mountain View just announced a seven-story apartment building right on San Antonio, next to, next to our city. I agree with Len that the idea of, of encouraging and, and structuring our cities so that walkability is important. I don't believe that if we agreed to five stories, that that would immediately become 20 stories. There's just no reason to believe we kept 50 feet in place for a long time. Maybe we could keep five stories or six stories or whatever the community might subscribe to for a long time.
Our final question on the issue of development is related to affordable housing. We'll begin with Mr. Fine, followed by Ms. Koo. How do you define affordable housing? For whom would you build it?
So I think there's, there's two ways to define it. One, there's the more technical definition, affordable housing, which is subsidized housing for below-market rate tenants or owners. The other side is housing that people can afford. And both of those are lacking here in Palo Alto. On the one hand, we have not produced enough affordable housing. Between 2007 and 2014, we produced 38% of our projected need of affordable housing. We're, we're in a loss here, right? We're in a rut, and we need to get ourselves out of it. I believe that we should have a responsive housing supply where affordable housing is built for a range of users, whether it is, as some folks have mentioned up here, city employees, public safety employees, but also for the normal folks who live here, work in our cafes, you know, work at Stanford. They may need affordable housing too. On the other side, we need to look at more housing choices. One way to reduce the pressure on our housing market is to produce different types of units, whether it's rentals, small units, cohousing, bungalows, different types of housing so folks have, can make the choice that they need for their family.
Ms. Koo to be followed by Mr. Keller.
Lately, the word affordable has been greatly misused. Mostly is a lot of the office workers who are saying that they would like affordable housing. However, we have to take care of the people that are valuable and beneficial to our community. And as Mr. Fine said, those would be our safety officers, as well as our teachers and our nurses who service our senior homes, such as Channing House and Webster House. It's important to focus on those people, and we have to be disciplined. The city itself is not into building housing. It is how we go about enabling the organizations that can have a impact in building such low-income housing. Thank you.
Mr. Keller to be followed by Ms. Niss.
Thank you. So I think it's important to build more affordable housing. In fact, there is actually a technical term, which is subsidized housing, and that includes different forms of affordable housing. It turns out that Palo Alto has about 2,500 units of subsidized housing, which is not quite 10% of our housing stock. And that's actually pretty impressive, but we certainly do need more. One way to do that is to increase the requirement for affordable housing from 15% to 25% as San Francisco is done. We also need to think about how we, as I mentioned, handle our, taking care of people who serve us. When I talk, when we're talking about El Camino and Page Mill Road, maybe the benefit of that is there be a master lease that is given into the city so that it can house these employees. Also, increase the affordable housing impact fees, which the planning commission opposed, and housing for seniors so that we can stay in our community as we age. Thank you.
Ms. Niss to be followed by Mr. Tanaka.
So I, I think that Mr. Fine did a good job of, I almost said a fine job, of describing what affordable housing actually is. And affordable housing has to be subsidized. So for those of you who watched A to 1 alma go up, that took not only city and county money, but also state money, federal money, and it took some tax credits. It took a lot to put that building up. And it takes that for all the affordable housing units that are in Palo Alto. I think, Mr. Keller, it's actually around 2,000 units. I was with the Palo Alto Housing yesterday. And we guessed that roughly 5,000 to 6,000 people do have that opportunity. But I think what's far more important is, while I was at the Housing Corp., but one of the things they mentioned to me is that every, every single place they have has a waiting list of 500 that they have had to cut off. We need affordable housing. Thank you.
Mr. Tanaka to be followed by Mr. Carl.
So I would first say that I think it's actually important that Palo Alto remains a very desirable area by having a certain quality of life. And so I think there will always be more demand for housing than Palo Alto could have, can actually supply. And that's just, I think that's just a reality. And I think it's important that we listen to community in terms of what's needed. I think that's, that's very, very important. But there's a lot of people that service Palo Alto, teachers. I was, I was just at a mixer before this. I was talking to someone that's moving out of Palo Alto, someone that's been here for 50 years and moving out of Palo Alto to Los Altos because there's not enough senior housing. So that's also a segment of the population that we need to serve. How do we get this? Well, I think probably one of the biggest answers is actually smaller units. Smaller units, basically by their nature, are going to be more affordable units. Now, I have to take issue with what was said earlier, which is the planning commission opposed impact fees. And I, I think the chair could correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually continue to study it more further because...
Mr. Carl.
There's no such thing as affordable housing in Palo Alto. If we build less expensive subsidized housing, we should make it available to our first responders, our seniors struggling to live on a fixed income, and our homeless.
We transition now to the topic of transportation. We'll begin with Mr. Tanaka, to be followed by Ms. Niss. The Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority is asking for a half-cent transportation tax while also proposing to reduce or eliminate bus lines in Palo Alto. Do you support this tax? If so, what would you do to ensure that Palo Alto receives its fair share of the tax revenue? Mr. Tanaka?
Yeah, so I think you're referring to Measure B. And I think this tax is actually quite interesting because a large portion of it will go towards grade separation for Charleston, for East Metal. And I think this is, this has the potential of being transformative for the city. So if the city plays its cards right, we could actually not just get grade separation, but we could actually get perhaps even undergrounding of the Caltrain, which kind of divides the city today. If you think about like, what's a big thing to do, and this is one of the things that I'm, I want to do if I, if I get on council, is actually fund the grade separation, not just funding the grade separation, but actually gaining the Caltrain undergrounded. And Palo Alto is actually prosperous enough that we could actually think about doing it. There's actually that possibility. So I think we need a physically strong city so we can do programs like this. And that's why I support this, this program is because it would allow this kind of divide that we have in the city, this physical divide, to be broken down, allow better bike rails, better traffic conditions than we have today. Thank you.
Ms. Niss to be followed by Mr. Keller.
And I think we are addressing Measure B. There's A, affordable housing. B, which deals with transportation. And I have been fortunate enough among my regional outreach to serve on the committee that discussed putting this on the ballot. If you vote for this in November, it has the possibility, over the next 30 years, doesn't come right away, but over the next 30 years, for bringing many millions of dollars into Palo Alto, that not only can go for the roads, but also, as Mr. Tanaka just said, also can go for grade separations. And because I put it in there myself, I also know that the money is there so that we can study how we can do the grade separations. We have to study first and have a plan because you have to be shovel-ready when you go for the money that is going to come from Measure B. So I hope you'll vote for it. I think it has great promise for Palo Alto and for the entire county. We are a region, and it's important that we serve the region.
Mr. Keller to be followed by Mr. Fine.
Thank you. So Palo Alto pays 7% of the county's sales tax, and we don't, we haven't been getting 7% of the services for the previous sales taxes that we've passed. A lot, most of it has basically gone to San Jose to fund BART's extension to include the Santa Clara. This time, we're actually seeing more. The $700 million going towards grade separations for Palo Alto, Mountain View, and Sunnyvale. That's not going to pay for all the need for grade separations that we have in Palo Alto, so we'll have to get additional resources that we have to do. But I do support the, the Measure B because of that. I think it's a good thing because it will also pay for Caltrain electrification, which is good. The problem is, they, they take it one hand, they give it, they give it one hand, they take away with the other. They're cutting, they're talking about cutting our bus service, the 35 bus, the 88 bus, and the outreach paratransit service for our seniors and, and for the disabled. And I've been fighting that, working to fight that cut. Thank you.
Mr. Fine to be followed by Ms. Koo.
So I'm strongly in support of Measure B. I think it is important that if we believe in transportation and the improvements needed, we should be willing to pay for it. And that's why I'm in support of Measure B. And as Councilmember Niss mentioned, I would encourage you all to look at it and take a good vote on it. Measure B does have a lot of money for grade separations, for Caltrain electrification, and our current council has done actually a pretty good job of making sure that many of those benefits will accrue here in Palo Alto. It also has money for pothole repairs, and that's important for our streets, although we have some of the best streets in the Bay Area nowadays. However, as Mr. Keller mentioned, it is looking, VTA is looking at reducing service on the 88 and 35, and we need to make sure that doesn't happen because it serves some of our elderly populations or students going to school at gun. In order to do that, we need to encourage our regional bodies, whether it's the County Board of Supervisors or the VTA Board, to reevaluate their board structure. San Jose has seven of 12 voting members on the board, and that's one of the reasons lots of the money for VTA goes to their region. But I am strongly in support of Measure B. It's an important way to get us a 21st century transportation system.
Ms. Koo.
I can't really say right now if I'm in support or not. The tax has good intent. However, we've been fooled once before. I encourage you to find out in the past, when we were promised the funds from VTA for the tax, we didn't get it. So this time around, we should, I am wary about trusting them. But at the same time, we do have transportation problems, and Caltrain is important to us, and we want to ensure that we do have the funds in order to provide for grade separation. At the same time, I have to wonder, grade separation is still far down the road and studying, and it's going to take a longer time. Meanwhile, we do have the four intersections that are at grade and will cause for further traffic congestion.
traffic congestion. Additionally, Caltrain is planning on electrifying very, very soon, and so adding cabs to it, it's not going to resolve the growth and the ridership. In a few years' time, it will be at capacity again. So the funds, it has to become shovel-ready sooner.
Continuing on the issue of transportation, we turn to the topic of traffic. We'll begin with Mr. Ely to be followed by Mr. Stone. What do you see as the most promising solutions to our traffic issues?
The 55, or the 50-foot height limit, increasing it so that there's a denser downtown. People can, don't need to travel as much. We won't have as many people. One of the big problems with Palo Alto, if you look at Redwood City, you turn off of Redwood City at Whipple, and you're basically in downtown. With Palo Alto, because Palo Alto was grown before 101 was built, they, we have a very hard time getting into Palo Alto. And so really, the train or taking out a bunch of houses on University Avenue and putting in another Oregon Expressway, which isn't going to happen, is, is the problem here. So we need to densify the downtown, and, and then, as Mr. Keller said, we need to make sure that we have the bus transportation.
Mr. Stone to be followed by Mr. Carl.
I think traffic is one of the greatest inhibitors to our quality of life here. I mean, I live in Midtown, and it took me over 20 minutes to drive here this evening. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous. And as we continue to, as we continue to grow, our, our traffic's just going to get worse. But I am optimistic that we can actually decrease traffic, not just mitigate it, but actually decrease it in the, in the future. We need to invest in, in technology. I mean, we have so many, so many transfer, so many technological advancements that we can make that are just right around the corner. I mean, we're already investing in the, in the App Scoop, which I know just a couple months ago had 400 trips a day into downtown. I mean, that's saving so, that's freeing up a lot of parking spots and really reducing traffic. We also got to invest in a more bike-friendly city, invest in bike express lanes. Every bicyclist we see on the street, that's one less car in front of us and one more, one additional parking spot. And also investing in the TMA, which I think is going to do a lot of good for our city.
Mr. Carl to be followed by Mr. McDougal.
I'm going to make a shocking statement. Cars don't cause traffic. Traffic is caused by too many cars coming to Palo Alto to work at the offices that we overbuilt over the last decade. How can we solve some of these problems? We have some promising new technologies coming along with highly networked ride-sharing services and self-driving cars, and the city needs to prepare for these new technologies, the promises, and the problems that they'll bring.
Mr. McDougal.
So relative to solving the traffic problem, I would first say that TMA is an important solution. If you look at the study that the TMA did, it would say that about 50% of the traffic into, in the city, in and out of the city, comes from the office environment, AKA the tech environment. 50% comes from, from the non-tech environment. Of the traffic that comes from the tech environment, probably only 2% to 3% of it actually comes from the larger companies. From the traffic that comes from the non-tech, it's about 70% of it comes from the smaller, the smallest companies, 0 to 25 employees. The TMA needs to find ways to support that, that group of, of traffic suppliers. The second thing we need to do is, is create a smart city where we're using technology for the benefit of our current citizens and our future citizens. And I totally support the idea of more bikability, more walkability.
We will now turn to several questions related to quality of life. The first will be directed to Mr. Carl, followed by Mr. Stone, related to Airbnb. Should the city regulate short-term rentals? And if so, to what degree? Mr. Carl?
I thi, I, this is new. I mean, the city is learning how to deal with this new type of business. We're seeing more and more trailers parked along El Camino, and it's my understanding that a lot of these trailers are actually being rented out as Airbnbs. So this could obviously develop into a real problem. So I think the city needs to investigate ways of regulating Air B, Airbnb-type rentals.
Mr. Stone to be followed by Ms. Niss.
Well, I think there does need to be some type of regulation. A lot of cities are doing that right now. I mean, we are, we are taxing Airbnbs. We do have a transient occupancy tax that is taxing Airbnb the same as hotels. So we are making money from it, but I think we also need to, we need to support our, our hotels. And we do need to regulate because it is a public safety issue. I mean, we need to know who's on the streets, who's, who's living next door. And so regulating, to a certain point, the short-term rentals, I think is a proper idea. Maybe three, maybe no, less than three months, no less than six months. It's something we should look into.
Ms. Niss to be followed by Mr. Keller.
The issue of Airbnb came to us as a council about two years ago. Karen Holman will remember it. We happened to be at something together and Googled it. And I said, there are 400 or 500 Airbnb places in Palo Alto. Any of you could Google it as you're sitting there tonight. I was really shocked by that. But over the past week, I've had another letter from the Crescent Park Association indicating that they have a particular house that they think has many occupants in it at one time, which not only exacerbates the parking, but I think makes it very difficult for the neighborhood. And I would agree with what Mr. Stone said. We have to worry about the safety in our neighborhoods as well. I think we need to take that up again as a council, and I will get a memo together on that and bring it back again. It'll be about two years later. It makes some money, but we don't have any control over Airbnbs.
Mr. Keller to be followed by Mr. Fine.
At my kickoff speech just about a month ago, I specifically called out the need to regulate Airbnb. You can read it on my website, arthurkeller.com, and look at the kickoff. And I talked about the fact that San Francisco regulates Airbnb, other cities do. We should start doing it, too. I, I also got a call related, similar to what Councilmember Niss said, from somebody who was talking about a hacker house and people renting houses out and then putting a whole bunch of apartment, a whole bunch of people living there transiently. And that basically harms the neighborhoods. So I think that we do need to regulate this, and we need to make a distinction. If somebody has a big house and they want to rent out a room in it, that's a different story because they're living there. From somebody who rents out, takes a house off the housing market and instead rents it out to people coming into our community for a day or two or a week, that's not the same kind of thing. And I think we should regulate Airbnb. Thank you.
Mr. Fine to be followed by Mr. McDougal.
So I'm in support of a fair study and fair regulations, like some cities, Santa Monica and San Francisco have done, in terms of taxing and regulating the duration and number of times you can rent an Airbnb property per month. I was at a conference this week and spoke with a company called Host Compliance, which actually scrapes the web and figures out how many there are. The figure, as of Monday, is there are 1,249 Airbnb listings in Palo Alto for an average sale price of $178 per night in a whole bunch of different housing types. So we need to look at these kind of services, figure out how big the problem is, and then work with Airbnb. They're 35 miles up 101, right? We need to bring them down here and make sure they know that there are quality of life issues that Palo Altons want to address. Related to the Airbnb issue is the issue of ghost housing, where you have houses, purchases, investment properties. In my neighborhood of College Terrace, I live next to two of them, and they're taking housing off the market. And it also kind of, you know, there's, there's no family there, which is sad. Some cities, such as Vancouver, have slapped a purchasing tax on those, and we should be willing to explore that as well.
Mr. McDougal followed by Mr. Tanaka.
So I too agree, we should regulate Airbnb. The city of Carmel limits Airbnb rentals to no less than one month. I suspect that even a one-month period would, would be sufficient to solve many of the problems that are discussed here and solve the problem that people talk about in their neighborhoods of the coming and going every, every other day, late at night, and then so on. Regulating the number of people, the number of Airbnbs in one residence is another part. I think this is really an issue. This is all about neighborhoods tonight. This is really an issue of neighborhood safety, neighborhood, community feeling. I'd like to repeat what Adrian said about ghost houses. In Victoria Bridge, Columbia, they actually have an incremental tax. So it's not just a purchase tax, but it's an incremental tax. They find that they can easily identify a ghost house and, and apply a ghost house tax basically on it.
Mr. Tanaka followed by Ms. Koo.
Well, I think Airbnb has brought a lot of opportunity. I was talking to one resident, she's elderly, about 90 years old, lives on Middlefield, kind of infirm, can't really take care of the house anymore. But she rented out her house to a bunch of Stanford grad students who actually helped her take out the garbage, maintain the house. And that's the case where it's kind of a win-win situation. But I've also heard many horror stories that have been shared already about, you know, tremendous parking issues. We have turnover every day, and you don't know who your neighbor is. There's safety issues. So there's also a lot of concerns also around Airbnb. And so I think what we have to do is take kind of a balanced approach. We have to kind of listen to other problems and take a balanced approach of how do we address this and make sure that there aren't negative impacts. Because while there's some positive impacts or positive benefits, there's also a lot of potential negatives. So I think looking at potential regulation to actually help, to enhance this is going to be important to do here in Palo Alto.
Ms. Koo to be followed by Mr. Ely.
Short-term rentals must definitely be regulated. And as Mr. Keller said, there is, San Francisco does have regulations, and we should take a look at those and follow suit. I too got calls from Crescent Park neighbors saying that this house, that was a three-bedroom, two-bath, is now a four-bedroom and is renting out, putting in bunk beds, and each of the bedrooms have four bunk beds in there. So potentially, that's 16 persons living in one house. Now, again, there's many people who've mentioned safety issues, and I have great concern with that. We have children that are riding bicycle coming home from school, and walking around on the streets, playing on the streets. So that is something to be a great concern of. Again, when technology and innovation is deteriorating residents' livability, it must be addressed immediately.
Mr. Ely.
I think this is a community, a house, housing community, and it needs to be a permanent house community. And so I would support something in the neighborhood of like what Carmel does. I think, I believe it's one, one month is the minimum amount that you can rent it. And I think there should also be a tax on it. Thanks.
Our next question related to quality of life will be directed first to Mr. McDougal, followed by Ms. Koo. What do you see as the biggest problems facing Palo Alto, and how would you address them?
So clearly, the traffic and, and, and housing problems are the, are the biggest problems facing Palo Alto. But I think the other thing that, that I find when I talk to residents, talk to citizens about what do they care about, I think what they care about is knowing that, that they can be listened to, knowing that the council is, is participating and understanding and showing empathy for, for their requirements, and that staff, in fact, is responsive. In general, I would say that people have particularly positive feelings about most of the services in the city. I'm particularly proud of the Library Commission and the libraries in terms of their responsiveness. But I think beyond the standard housing and traffic, it's, is, is the city listening to what we're interested in.
Ms. Koo to be followed by Mr. Ely.
Palo Alto is becoming or transitioning into an office park, and residents are fighting to be heard and to regain their quality of life. As Mr. Carl had said earlier, it's not transportation or parking that is what the focus is, is overdevelopment. And moving forward, it's again, the tensions between the growth rate and our quality of life. So at the end of the day, I think that Palo Alto has always, always been a family-oriented community. And what it boils down to is how we continue with a vibrant community that looks at family and being that village, taking care of their kids, their children, and each other.
Mr. Ely to be followed by Mr. Carl.
I think one of the biggest problems in our city right now is, is that we're not thinking long-term, and we're not dealing with cycles. Palo Alto's always had cycles. I remember when I was a kid, when University Avenue was a ghost town, right after Stanford Shopping Center opened. I've seen it happen on California Avenue. We had, somebody was talking yesterday, I believe, about grocery stores. Well, when I was a kid, there were four grocery stores on California Avenue. And I think we need to look a little longer term, and I think that that's what I hear the most, is that it seems like things happen, and then the city reacts, and it doesn't go back and fix problems that were with, because the cycle has changed. So I guess that's my answer.
Mr. Carl to be followed by Mr. Stone.
The biggest issues in Palo Alto, of course, are land use, office development and housing, and transportation. Office development is pressurizing all of our infrastructure, housing, schools, parks, and parking. So we, the, the biggest thing we could do to depressurize the situation is control the overdevelopment of office development.
Mr. Stone to be followed by Ms. Niss.
Probably that transportation and housing are the two biggest problems in Palo Alto. I really do think that jobs, housing imbalance is the root cause for many of the woes that we're facing in Palo Alto. I mean, the latest tech boom of the past six years has really exacerbated this problem. So we need to diagnose what it is. And it really is that, that expansion of office growth. So we really, we need to address the, the expansion of office growth and then focus on, on working on our infrastructure and our housing needs and transportation. I think, I really do think transportation, if we can address that, if we can have a more robust public transportation infrastructure, better roads, better, a more bikeable city, then we can really start addressing some of the biggest problems that we are facing here in Palo Alto.
Ms. Niss to be followed by Mr. Keller.
Thanks. I think among quality of life issues are how we see our schools and our city interacting together. And one of the areas I'd like to see as we go forward is more interaction there. And what that would lead to, I think, is more, more of the streets being open to cars, which may not be the best idea, but I think we're moving very rapidly toward more bicycle use. We have started a $20 million bike pedestrian pathway and a master plan that I think is going to make a big difference in our quality of life. If we are able to share our streets, share our schools, and, and able, again, to look at this use somewhat differently, I think that will reduce the traffic, the traffic congestion. And as we move toward a couple of the other apps we suggested tonight, I think we will improve our quality of life and will improve safety for everyone.
Mr. Keller to be followed by Mr. Tanaka.
I think that the schools are the crown jewel of our community, as, as Councilmember Niss points out. But when we did the housing element in 2014, we didn't consider the relationship between housing and schools at all, even though we have a program in our comprehensive plan says we should do that. So I'm in favor of actually having a policy to consider the relationship between housing and schools. I also, and I put, I'm insisting on putting that in the comprehensive plan. We certainly have a housing-jobs, it's actually a housing-jobs-transportation triangle. And so we need to think about all three of those because there are people who will continue to be, live outside of our city, who will work here. We need to make sure that they can get here effectively and reduce traffic while, while doing that. Also, while we add housing, we need to add parks because they're important in addressing the cut-through traffic in our neighborhoods. So I think that there are a lot of things that we need to do, and the city needs to be more responsive to that and in terms of understanding the impacts of development. Thank you.
Mr. Tanaka to be followed by Mr. Fine.
Well, I think we've talked a lot about traffic and parking, and certainly these are significant problems. That's pretty clear. And I think the way we solve them is through collaborative solutions, working with our regional partners and trying to address these issues. But I think the big issue that really doesn't get well addressed are the issues that families face here in Palo Alto. So most people move here for the kids, for the great schools. That's why I moved here. My, my son goes to Jordan, my daughter goes to Escondido. We moved here for the great schools. So I think it's actually... So I think it's actually important for the city to support the schools. We do that already through the coverly transfer. We need to really make sure that the schools remain strong, that we have transportation programs for kids, that we make sure that the parks are safe and well-maintained. I think also, I've talked to a lot of young families and, you know, there was a time when my son was just born and my wife had a hell of a time finding daycare in Palo Alto. So she literally took him to Wana Creek, where she worked, for daycare. And that shouldn't have to happen. I've talked to a lot of families that struggle with this. And I think the voice of families here in Palo Alto really are not well-heard. And I think this is something that we need to address. Thank you.
Mr. Fine.
So I think the main issues in Palo Alto are not new ones. It is traffic, it's transportation issues, it's office growth, it's the loss of local retail. We've been talking about these in Palo Alto for many, many decades. And so I think in a way, part of our problem is the ability of our city and our community to actively and proactively solve those problems and figure out what solutions can we do here? Where do we need to work with partners, whether it's the school districts or nearby cities? I think the way we begin to solve those problems is by reinvigorating our civic spirit, making our city as efficient and as effective and as innovative as our business community here. So we should solve our problems with compassion and think about inclusivity, how we're serving all different populations, our business community, Stanford, our schools. We should look to our regional neighbors because some of these problems are regional in nature and we're not going to be solving them alone. And then finally, we really need to just try new ideas. You know, this is Silicon Valley, we're the heart of it. And I believe we do have the solutions here, we just need to move in a way that allows us to try them out.
I'd like to thank all of the candidates for sticking so well to our timeline. I appreciate that. That hasn't always been the case in past debates, so thank you for that. We are now going to open up to audience questions. I'd just like to remind everybody that it is critically important that every candidate here feel comfortable expressing their views and speaking frankly. And to that end, please refrain from applauding or booing or expressing other reactions to the candidate's statements. We again asked our audience, as you'll recall, to direct these questions to particular candidates. So these are the audience's requests. The first one comes and is directed to Lydia Koo and to Mr. Tanaka. We'll start with Ms. Koo. How would you expand our parks as our population grows? And one minute again for all responses.
Our comp plan currently calls for four acres per thousand residents. Currently, the city is at a deficit, is at 2.8 acres per resident. Open space and parks have been, are very important, and this was actually produced in a white paper to people's health and especially to our children. So I would like, if I am going to expand parks more, then we would, I would propose that we stop building and let's focus on parks instead of building any more developments. I would also look at property that belong to the city at this point, such as places like the Winter Lodge, or also the ITT power pole out by the Baylands that belong to a city but is not considered a park yet. I would also look at Gamble Gardens and making it a park. That's additional space. There's a long list that we can consider into adding to parks.
Mr. Tanaka.
Well, for me, parks are very important. Kids need a place to play. And when I was president of the College of Citizens Resident Association, one of the first things we worked on was to get soccer fields on the corner of Page Mill and El Camino. And this, at the time, there was a lot of families that would need soccer, soccer fields, and this is something that we provided. So I think it's creative solutions like that that we could do to create more parks. But I think it's also about the utilization of parks and also who gets used to parks. So I think that by better management, we could also get more park space as well. I also think that there needs to be diversity of usage of parks. So sometimes tennis is really, really hot and then it's soccer, then it's something else. So I think that also has to be updated. And that will also create more availability of the parks.
The next question is related to groundwater and is directed at Mr. Carl and Mr. Fine. Are you likely to support regulations to reduce the amount of groundwater pumped and dumped even if such regulations increase the cost of building a basement by a hundred dollars per square foot? Mr. Carl?
Yes, I am. You know, I've recently become aware of how deeply troubling the pumping of groundwater is. It's not just a matter of wasting water, it's also obstructing the underground flow of aquifers in the city. And that, if there's too many basements built and if there's too much groundwater pumped, this could cause problems with flooding. We've been very, well, unfortunate that we have a drought, but we've also been very fortunate that we haven't had flooding lately. But we could return to a much more rainfall in years to come.
Mr. Fine.
So this is an issue that's been raised a number of times by citizen advocates, which I think is a really important part of our culture here in Palo Alto. I would be willing to support increased regulations on groundwater, dewatering. I'm not sure a hundred bucks per square foot is the right figure, but that's something we'd have to look at. I think there's also ways to figure out how we lessen this problem. So one, maybe we can divert water to local uses, to your neighbors or to our city parks. Maybe we can look at requiring coffer dams, which actually stop the dewatering problem. We could also explore a charge on dewatering, maybe at a per gallon, per square foot rate. I just don't know if that's a hundred bucks a square foot. As Mr. Carl mentioned, there's also issues in terms of stormwater runoff. And we may have to explore citywide, working with partners and geotechnical scientists to figure out where and how we can build basements in Palo Alto and where we should not, and then update our regulations accordingly.
The next question is about Palo Alto's schools and is directed to Mr. Keller and Mr. Carl. What role should the city have in our schools now and when planning for the long term?
Thank you. So firstly, the city has nothing to do with curriculum at schools, nor do we have anything to do with staffing at schools. But there are things that the city is involved in. We provide resources for safe routes to schools, we provide resources for school crossing guards, we rent coverly, which gives a significant amount of money to the school district, we participate in funding for playing fields because they're used after schools by various uses of the city. So there's a lot that is involved here. But where we haven't been doing anything is understanding the relationship between our housing policies and schools. And that's something that is actually in our comprehensive plan that we've been ignoring. So I do think that we need to start looking at the relationship with, between the new policies on housing and how that has a relationship with our schools, whether the schools are overcrowded or whether there's excess, sufficient capacity for more housing. Thank you.
Mr. Carl.
Well, as Mr. Keller mentioned, the school board, the schools are managed by the school board. But Palo Alto can do a lot to facilitate and make sure that our schools operate efficiently. Palo Alto owns land on which Coverly currently exists and is, different uses are being considered for that facility. We should consider very carefully whether that facility will be needed for future schools in Palo Alto based on what we think our growth rate in housing is going to be over the next decade.
Our next question is related to Palo Alto parks and is directed at Ms. Niss. Why are you opposed to restrooms in our city parks?
Wow, a wonderful chance. I'm not opposed to the restrooms in city parks, nor have I ever been. But when we recently had a discussion about this, I indicated that we had had both support for and that we had had support against. And somebody reminded me that when this was first considered, and I don't remember if it was the eighties or the nineties, the entire chamber was filled with people who were troubled about having a restroom in the park. And while I don't have any opposition to that, what I relayed that night and what I hope any of us would do is if you've heard from any of your constituents, relay that during a meeting so that all of our constituents feel heard. And we haven't yet made any decisions about the bathrooms and so forth in the parks because that's part of the parks' master plan. So, fine with bathrooms with me.
Returning to the issue of transportation to some extent, the next question is directed to Mr. Stone. How are you going to get the FAA to listen to the city of Palo Alto and the residents?
Well, that's a good question. I think I would leave that to Joe Semidion, Anna Schu, and they're doing a fabulous job, so I want to make sure that they continue that work. I also think that what Sky Posse has done, and Stuart Carl, his leadership on that, has been great for relaying the concerns of Palo Alto to the FAA. And, you know, Palo Alto, we must do all that we can to make sure that we advocate on behalf of our residents because it really is an issue. And I think we're all tired of having our conversations interrupted by constant flyovers. So it really comes down to advocacy and so we need to, we need to do that every chance we get.
Our next question returned to the issue of quality of life for clarifying questions directed at Mr. McDougall and Ms. Koo. Do you believe that the quality of life in Palo Alto is better now than in 2008 during the Great Recession? Why or why not?
So the first thing I want to say about that is I frankly am not unhappy with my quality of life in Palo Alto. I think in fact most, in spite of the fact that we've spent the evening talking about transportation problems, growth cap problems, Airbnb problems, that people in general, and one of the reasons that people work so hard to advocate for Palo Alto is that people in general are not unhappy. They just want it to be better. That's why I believe that we need to participate in the concept of a sustainable city, sustainable going forward with all, without all of the ups and downs that come from putting moratoriums on things or overgrowing things. I can't relate to 2008 in terms of quality of life or happiness. I can only tell you that at this particular moment, in spite of the fact I lived there here then, that I think we are well off in Palo Alto and we'd all like it to be just better because we love it.
Ms. Koo.
Quality of life in 2008, actually I remember working at the Citywide Emergency Preparedness Program. And I do have to say that it was much better back then, although there were notices of increase in traffic. Working with different residents in different neighborhoods, I do hear a lot nowadays that they, a lot of the seniors, they don't go to their exercise classes anymore because it's too difficult to get across town to get there. They don't go to lunches at Avenidas because it's too difficult to get there. Isolation is not good for seniors. And then a lot of residents actually also say that they do not come to downtown in order to use the restaurants or the shops. And that is pretty sad because a lot of us do fund and are taxpayers and it should be, and we should be participatory there. We have lost a lot of retail stores that has moved to other towns, so they're actually getting our sales tax nowadays. But also for a lot of us that utilize retail stores such as university, I'm sorry, thank you.
Well, speaking of downtown, the next question is related to downtown Palo Alto and is directed at Mr. Stone and Mr. Keller. Should large companies be allowed to remain downtown? And what kind of businesses should we encourage in the downtown? Mr. Stone?
Well, Palo Alto, our history is we are the birthplace of innovation. And I think we need to make sure that we encourage that, we continue to keep that culture. I think this is a place where companies are born, they grow, they foster, and then, and then they move out when they get to a certain size. And we've seen this with Facebook, we've seen that with Google. And I think our city policies and our zoning in downtown need to encourage that history. And so I would, I would encourage, I would encourage large businesses in downtown to move out of downtown Palo Alto into the Stanford Research Park surrounding communities like we have done in the past. I would like to see, I would like to see zoning in downtown that would require employers with fifty employees or less, or thirty employees or less, to be able to operate in downtown for research and development purposes. But other than that, large companies should be outside so we can continue to foster the growth of innovation and new ideas.
Mr. Keller.
When I served on the Planning and Transportation Commission, there was a proposal for a project that I think is at Homer and I believe it's on Ramona, in part of the sofa area, where the zoning required that there was a limit on how much office space a particular tenant could have. And they, a VC firm wanted to own, wanted to rent the whole building. And we said no. And now there are multiple tenants there, which is much more sustainable. What's going on now is that we talk about a certain company, Palantir, which has representatives on the planning commission, which, and one of the things about it is that Palantir actually doesn't add much sales tax. There's no, they don't eat in the restaurants, they have their own cafeteria. And they're basically taking over building after building. So I do think that we should think about reserving Palo Alto downtown for what its original use was for many years, which is startups, and then bigger companies should move where there's more space, as has Google, as has Facebook, et cetera. Thank you.
Our next question is directed at Ms. Niss and Ms. Koo. What would you do to finally realize the dream of bringing fiber optic services to every home and business in Palo Alto?
You know, I wish, I wish I had a magic wand, to be honest. This began twenty years ago. We actually do have a dark fiber ring. I think most of you know that. We have forty-two miles of dark fiber ring. It would really not take a great deal for us to finally be connected. However, we decided a couple of years ago that we would take a look at Google and that we would consider being in partnership with Google. One of the issues, or one of the areas that we've been looking at is to have not only fiber that would, a conduit that would work for Google, but also a conduit that would work for Palo Alto as we go forward. We haven't yet been able to agree on that, but I do hear, I hear that there's a good possibility that something may come together by the end of December. I wouldn't hold your breath, but we do hear that it's a possibility.
Ms. Koo.
I know very little about fiber to the home or fiber to premises. However, I have heard from a lot of local residents who have talked to me about it. I do have to question the economics behind it. So while we do have fiber laid in right now, and I understand there's a partnership that is forging forward, there's a step back with Google. However, I need to question whether it is something that is going to be financially feasible or competitive with a lot of the other companies that offer Wi-Fi, internet services, fiber, that sort of thing. Not really my field, but I will learn. Thank you.
The next question is directed at Mr. Fine. How connected are you with younger, potentially future residents of Palo Alto to make decisions on quality of living or living style for both current and future residents? Do you see enough sufficient participation from future younger residents in the audience?
In the audience? With all due respect, no. You know, this is a tough one, but it's a good one. I think it actually speaks to what kind of community we want to be. When I graduated Gunn, I graduated with just under four hundred fellow students. There's about four or five of us left here in Palo Alto, and I don't think that's normal. I think as a community, we need to make efforts to make sure that folks who are, you know, born here and raised here, who go to our schools, why many of us move here and want to stay here, have an opportunity in Palo Alto. I think that is absolutely vital for us to focus on. In terms of my connection to younger folks, you know, a lot of the time I hang out with not younger folks. I don't have so many young friends here in Palo Alto. Many of them have moved to San Francisco or to Oakland, cities like Mountain View. And I can't say, you know, I have connections to young folks who want to move here necessarily. But I will tell you, many people I speak to in my job and, you know, when I travel around the country, they're very interested in Palo Alto. And they're hard-working folks who want to come here, lay down roots, raise a family, and do all the things that we've had the opportunity to do. And I think it's important for us to consider their future as well.
Next question is directed at Mr. Stone. How would you propose easing restrictions for second units, nanny units or accessory dwelling units, specifically as recently put forth by Governor Brown? And then underline several times specifically.
Well, I think a big problem with ADUs is that, you know, our city staff has spent countless hours, thousands of dollars on these very issues. And the fact of the matter is, just this past year, we only had about a dozen applications for ADUs. And it's very difficult to be able to, it's very difficult to be able to enforce and actually require, once the ADU is built, that it's actually going to be used for housing. And so I think that is the greatest concern for it. There's nothing, legally, there's nothing there to be able to require, once the ADU is built, to have it be used for, to have it be used for housing. I mean, it could be used as a, as a personal gym. It could be used as a, as a personal gym. I mean, it could be used as a personal gym, it could be used as an office. So without the ability to actually enforce it for what we hope it will be used for, I don't see ADUs as being the panacea for solving our housing crisis.
Our next question is for Mr. Keller. What steps will you take to ensure residents, visitors, and businesses in Palo Alto can continue disrupting the status quo? And how will this culture impact your decisions for the city?
Well, I think that we do need to be experimenting, but we need to understand that city policies, when we say a building is built, and that's an experiment, that building will be built for 50 years, will be there for years to come. So we need to be careful about our experiments in terms of what the city does, and it's hard for a city to make changes quickly. However, in terms of startups, you know, I've been involved in startups for a number of years. I was involved since the 90s in startups. So I understand the issues of startups. And I think that it's harder for startups to be in Palo Alto because office rents are being bid up by certain large companies that want more office space. So I think that that's been making it difficult for that. However, we can do partnerships with our startups to help things in terms of transportation issues, in terms of energy, working with Stanford. I think there are a lot of opportunities.
Our next question is directed at Ms. Niss and Mr. Fine. Climate change is expected to bring significant challenges regarding water, among them longer droughts, more severe storms, sea level rise, groundwater inundation. Considering these challenges, what are some proposals regarding water that you would advocate to make Palo Alto more resilient? Ms. Niss?
Well, the first thing I would do was tell you how disappointed I was during July when California took the water restrictions away. I was really surprised at that. And I hope you know that, and therefore, there really isn't as much, what I would call rationing, that exists now. I'm concerned about it for, and the reason they actually did that is, this is absolutely true, the water companies were not making enough money. And that was extremely difficult for them. And so they persuaded the governor to take the limits off. I would go back to the limits that we have had earlier, go back to more drought tolerant lawns, more drought tolerant landscape. And I think we can really do that. We in Palo Alto had cut back something like, and I don't remember the exact figure, but incredible percent in the amount of water that we used. I think we can do it, and I think we should go back to doing it again.
Mr. Fine?
So at a high level, I think we have to reduce our consumption. We have to reuse water where appropriate, and we have to prepare our city and residents for the changes that climate change will bring. So I believe in the Bay Area, Palo Alto has the second highest persumption per capita in water use, right after Hillsboro. So there are some gains that we could make in terms of reducing our own consumption, whether that's through recycling on site, as Councilmember Niss mentioned, drought tolerant plantings, which is something I've encouraged on the planning commission. We see projects come before us. We can also look at expanding the Purple Pipe System so we can use recycled water, which has been treated, and recharge our aquifers in the right places. Maybe it's up at Lake Log, areas like that. And finally, we need to future-proof our infrastructure where appropriate. So as we upgrade buildings and services in the city, we need to evaluate the effects that climate change will bring and make sure those vital city services will serve us, whether it's a flood or another kind of emergency in our city.
Our next question is returning to the issue of affordable housing and is directed at Ms. Koo. Would you allow density bonuses on downtown or California Avenue parcels for affordable housing, which is part of President Obama's toolkit? Specifics, please.
Density bonuses can be used if they're not using another tool in President Obama's toolkit. I think that if the entire project is dedicated to residential housing and there's affordable BMR units in there, then yes, I would be in support of it. I would like to see it within the zoning code. And the density bonus is used towards affordable housing. I'd like to see 25% of BMRs versus what we have in place now at 15%. Definitely negotiable.
The next question returns to the issue of transportation and is directed at Ms. Niss. What would you do to increase public transit? It was a huge loss when Samtrans dropped the KX bus. It served all three SFO terminals. What happened?
That is true, and I've had friends who have mentioned that. And to increase the use of public transportation, I think we need to provide more transportation in our city than we're currently using. We began our shuttle program here in Palo Alto in 1997. And I think, first of all, we don't indicate often enough how frequently it runs, where you can actually catch it. And people have said to me, they didn't know we had a shuttle program. We have a really good shuttle program, and I think we need to coordinate that more with the margaritas at Stanford, with the buses that actually run into our community, and there aren't a lot of buses. But we could take first steps, especially in expanding that shuttle. And we have indicated on the Measure B, once again, that we could use some of that money for shuttle services in our own city.
The next question is directed at Mr. Keller. How do you think the city council can ensure any new housing will serve people who work in Palo Alto?
I don't think we can legally do that. I think that essentially, people can work anywhere they wish to work. And in fact, only a third of the people who live in Palo Alto, who are employed, actually work in Palo Alto. And also, people tend to change jobs more often than they actually change their homes. So if somebody moves to a house in Palo Alto, moves to even an affordable housing unit, a subsidized housing unit, and they work in Palo Alto, they may change jobs to somewhere else. Do we kick them out? I think not. So I don't think we can actually do that. But perhaps, as was done in San Francisco in coordination with the Housing and Urban Development of the United States, they basically gave a preference to people who are already living in the community for the subsidized housing. And perhaps we can look at that in order to give preference to people who work in Palo Alto to reduce traffic.
The next question returns to Ms. Niss. How are you planning for employee retention when you are not meeting the financial responsibilities to current and future city employees?
And I presume in some way that must reference pensions, do you think? This is talking about how we keep our own employees here.
Let me state it again.
If you don't mind.
How are you planning for employee retention when you are not meeting the financial responsibilities to current and future city employees?
I am not sure I get the gist of that. So I have to think that this has something to do with pensions and whether or not we can take care of those pensions as we go forward. I don't know that we're not, I hope we're paying inadequate amount to keep our employees here. I haven't heard that employees are leaving because of what they are getting paid. I can only guess that this question may reference pensions, and we too are concerned about that. If you have read anything about the CalPERS return lately and know that it's fallen down to 1%, I think we should have concerns about that. So if that wasn't what the questioner actually meant, I'm here afterward, and perhaps you would come and talk to me more about what we're not doing about employee retention as it relates to either their salary or to their health benefits.
Our next question is related to Castileia, and it is actually directed at four candidates: Mr. Fine, Ms. Koo, Mr. Tanaka, and Ms. Niss. Should the school be allowed to grow as they have requested? What about quality of life for nearby residents? Mr. Fine?
So I think the first thing to recognize is that Castileia has been out of compliance with their conditional use permit for a number of years, and the city, like all of its ordinances, should begin enforcing that. I think then we should look at what are the quality of life issues for residents in the neighborhood and figure out how Castileia and that neighborhood can work together. Maybe it's things like prohibiting Castileia from having events on the weekends or after certain hours at night. Maybe it's working with them on systems like a transportation demand management program. They have many students coming from out of town, or helping figure out where their teachers are coming from. I do think Castileia plays an important role in terms of educating young women and helping them succeed in the Bay Area, get connected with good jobs and opportunities. So there might be opportunities for them to grow in Palo Alto, but maybe they have to grow somewhere else. That has to be debated. But first, we need to make sure that we address the concerns of residents in those neighborhoods, bring Castileia into compliance, and work with them on their future plans.
Ms. Koo?
R1 neighborhoods are important and must be protected. Castileia actually has been in our community for many years as well. I believe it's over 100 years. And they have, as Mr. Fine said, serviced, is a great school. It actually brings up our girls and has a lot of qualities and benefits. Yet at the same time, I think that any business that operates in R1 neighborhoods, near single-family homes, must be good stewards and good neighbors and find a way in order to operate closely and cooperatively. There are violations in place now, and they do have to come to compliance. So that's something that we have to visit. I think the city needs to visit. Thank you.
Mr. Tanaka?
So I think Castileia, you know, it's definitely a big resource for us here in Palo Alto. It's one of the great educational resources, as Adrian mentioned, in terms of educating young women. My wife actually went to Castileia, and she loved the school. But at the same time, I think it's really important to understand what are the impacts that the school is having on the surrounding community. So for me, it's always been important to listen, right? To really think about what are the impacts that, whether it's Castileia or any other organization, has on the surrounding communities, and try to see how you mitigate that. I've actually talked to both Castileia, folks in Castileia, as well as folks from the neighborhood. And I think each of them has a very interesting perspective that aren't that far apart. From the Castileia point of view, they've actually implemented a TDM program that has cut down traffic. And from the neighborhood point of view, I think they also have some very legitimate concerns. And so there's not a magic bullet here of how to solve this problem. But I think listening is one step.
I'm going to have to cut you off there. I want to thank all of the members of the audience for those questions. If you're like me, I'm sure you wanted to jump in and ask follow-up questions. And again, the good news is that the candidates will be here afterwards, and you continue the conversations with them directly. The good news is that we have enough time to actually give each candidate two minutes for their closing remarks. These are again in a randomly selected order. We will begin those now with Mr. McDougal, followed by Ms. Niss. Mr. McDougal, you have two minutes.
So thank you. And thank you again for everybody being here and the opportunity to speak. So I want to reiterate that I'm certainly not unhappy living in Palo Alto. In fact, I'm very happy living in Palo Alto, and I suspect that most of you are and most of the candidates are. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here, working so hard to make the city better. We've talked about several things tonight. I'm not going to reiterate any of those things. I would like to mention some things that I think didn't get addressed, or answers that might not have been given. I think number one is the importance of the Baylands and the foothills. The fact that we have this incredible environment that's not, we're not just between the Baylands and the foothills, we're in the Baylands and foothills. They're part of it. I think that that needs to be mentioned. I think the importance of creating regional partnerships, partnerships with East Palo Alto, Mountain View, Menlo Park are really important. I think that extending our partnerships for housing with nonprofits, we have partnerships today, but I think we can extend those. I do think the shuttle system needs to be, I'll say, reimagined. I think like Councilmember Niss said, we have a good shuttle system, and part of the problem is, it's not well-known. But I think going forward into the future, there's technology available to reimagine it and make it more pervasive for all citizens, for seniors, for students, and for others. I think relative to the question of parks, I view the question of parks as considering them as gathering places. And when you consider gathering places, you need to consider the libraries in the same context of gathering places. We didn't talk about the canopy of trees, which is really important when we talk about, when we ask people, "Tell me what you like about Palo Alto," trees always comes out. And I think we didn't talk about the concept of making this into a smart city and using technology for our citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Niss, to be followed by Mr. Carl.
First, thank you all for being here tonight. You've been terrific at listening. You also have given us some very good questions, some tough questions. So in closing, I'd like to mention several things that I'd like to see happen as we go forward. In particular, I'd like to see a much closer relationships with the schools, which is what we've talked about tonight. That's where our play areas are. In many ways, the schools are an extension of our park system. Some of the schools have wonderful big areas in which to play soccer and so forth. I look at Jordan in particular, that has an enormous play area, and they're very good at sharing it. I would say that as well. I'd like to also see us finish our bike path, which we have started and I think are doing a pretty good job at. But I am hearing some complaints about the size of the streets, and has happened as a result of the bikes, the new bike path. And then I would like to see us finally finish the overpass for Adobe Creek for the bikes. We have started on that now and been working on it for several years. I'd like to see that finally finish. So, and as I go into closing, in addition to thanking you for coming tonight, I also want to thank people who have endorsed me in my run. And I'd like to thank Anna Eshu and Joe Semidion, and many of you here that are in the audience tonight. Thank you so much for your support. And lastly, I would like to respectfully ask for your vote on November 8th. Your ballots will begin to come to you the week after next, and you will have about four weeks to take a look at them. Vote on November 8th. I hope you will support me, and I will continue to support you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Mr. Carl, to be followed by Mr. Tanaka.
Palo Alto is at a crossroads. We can return to a city that considered its innovative residents its greatest asset, or we can continue on a path towards a city that thinks its greatest asset is the land under our feet. If elected, I will work to restore our declining quality of life. Our schools, roads, parks, recreational facilities, that fostered the generation of Americans that created the microchip, the personal computer, the internet, and created an industry that is the engine of innovation worldwide. Our recently departed and most celebrated resident innovator did not grow up in a vibrant urban environment, whatever that means. He grew up as a free-range child in suburban Cupertino, an environment full of mobility and opportunity. If elected, I will continue the work begun two years ago to end the era of rampant overdevelopment and restore Palo Alto's quality of life, the quality of life that fostered the generation of great American leaders and innovators. I'd like to thank PAN for hosting this event tonight, and thank you all for attending.
Mr. Tanaka, to be followed by Mr. Keller.
So I'd also like to thank everyone for taking time out of their evening to come out here to listen to us. I think this is a great sign of community involvement and self-engagement, and I think that's very, very important. Because I think one of the most important things is to actually listen to the constituents. Myself, I've been campaigning, I've knocked on probably about 1,000 doors, listening to what are some of the concerns of residents here in Palo Alto. And as a result, I've actually earned quite a few endorsements. I've got endorsement of Supervisor Joe Semidion, Senator Jerry Hill, Assemblyman Rich Gordon, Assemblyman Evan Lowell, former Assemblyman Paul Fong, as well as many of the Democratic clubs, including the Democratic Party, 10 former mayors, 12 current or former city council members, over 250 endorsements total. And I think the reason why I've gotten such an outpouring of support is really because I'm a good listener. I really do try to understand what are the different sides to issues. Because rarely is there a magic bullet. Rarely is there an ideological answer. Typically, it's something that's much more nuanced. It's something where it takes understanding of what's going on. It's something where it takes understanding of what's going on. It's important to be thoughtful about what's really the issue and how to solve the issue, because oftentimes, when you look at the issues from all different sides, there's actually win-win solutions. It doesn't have to be someone wins and someone loses. So I would appreciate your support and thank you for your time.
Mr. Keller, to be followed by Mr. Fine.
Thank you very much for being here and listening tonight. I think it's been, and participating with your questions. I have a well-documented track record of supporting the interests of our residents and small businesses. I have promoted electric car charging, flood protection, and a bicycle bridge over 101 in South Palo Alto. Our business community must do more to reduce traffic and spillover parking in our neighborhoods. Speeding, cut-through traffic harms our quality of life. We can and should build housing while considering school capacity and class size. Dense housing needs more neighborhood parks. In considering 21st century transportation, remember that Uber and self-driving cars still add to traffic congestion, and Caltrain is at capacity. Palo Alto must better enforce better laws, like the required grocery store at Edgewood, commitments to reduce traffic, prohibiting businesses and Airbnb taking over homes, and our traffic laws. When marking your ballot, please remember, the Palo Alto Weekly has long identified me by my staunch criticism of commercial growth. I will not become pro-growth after the election. Please vote Arthur Keller on November 8th. Thank you.
Mr. Fine, to be followed by Ms. Koo.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. Thank you to Pan, and thank you to our former mayor, Espinoza, for hosting us tonight. I'm really enthused and invigorated by hearing your questions, by seeing everyone here. I think it's a great sign about Palo Alto. We are a wonderful city, and we all care deeply about this place and making sure that we maintain and improve our great quality of life. But we're at a bit of an inflection point. The jobs, housing, and transportation imbalance is really threatening our quality of life, our neighborhoods, our business community, and we need to make sure we can solve those issues. But I believe, actually, no, you know, being raised here, I know we can solve these issues. That's Palo Alto. We are a center of innovation and creativity, and we can solve our big problems, whether it's transportation, housing, effectiveness, dark fiber, all these things we're talking about. We have the solutions here, we just need the will to get it done. We also need a balanced and thoughtful council to make sure that it listens to all residents, to our business community, to nonprofits, to Stanford, and that we work with nearby cities to solve some of our regional issues. So I want to be a leader on those things. I want to help us move forward for a 21st century transportation system. I want to look at how we can support housing choices for a range of income levels and a range of generations, so we support seniors and we support young folks. This is the lifeblood of our community. All the time, we have to keep in mind what our values are. It's community, it's our schools, it's efficiency, it's innovation, it's inclusivity. Those should be our guiding values here in Palo Alto. And a number of folks believe I have the vision and those values to move forward, including Assemblymember Rich Gordon, our state senator, the Democratic Party, and Supervisor Joe Semidion. I'm a native son with planning and government experience. Mine is a grassroots campaign, I'm a first-time candidate, but I have deep respect for our city's past, for our neighborhoods, and I also have the vision for our future. This is a wonderful city, and I want to keep it that way.
Ms. Koo, to be followed by Mr. Ely.
I want to thank the organizers and Mayor Espinoza for this forum, and to all of you in the audience for coming tonight and for caring about our city. I am running in order to continue my service to our community. My history and my continued desire has always been for City Hall to make the best possible use of our residents' expertise. The format of forums push candidates to give simplistic answers, including slogans. All of us applaud inclusiveness, better transportation, and quality of life, but reality must be faced, and slogans will not solve our challenges. To understand where we are as potential policymakers, to understand where we as potential policymakers really stand, we need to understand some of the specifics. We need a council with the wisdom to evolve our community in a thoughtful and deliberate way, which embraces innovation but does not rely on unproven assumptions about future lifestyles and transportation until we see these things actually work in Palo Alto, because we are all in this for the long term. The next council will make decisions that shape the character of our city for many years to come. Reality is, the city cannot be everything to everyone. Words such as "smart city," "innovative transportation," "technology," "car light," "car free," "value capture," "smart urban planning" are all exciting words, but if it deteriorates our standard of livability, then it's just words. It would be my great honor to continue my service to the residents of our community on council, and I ask for your vote to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Ely, to be followed by Mr. Stone.
I want to thank everybody for coming and for Pan for putting this on. I wish I'd been able to answer a few more questions, but I guess I'm not very interesting. I think one of the things that I'd like to point out, and I'd like to differentiate myself a little bit, not only have more history in Palo Alto than anyone on the panel, but I'm only, I believe, I'm the only one that is not politically involved in something. We have planning commissioners, heads of planning, and that sort of thing. And all my background in the city is through philanthropy. My father was very involved in philanthropy here in Palo Alto and believed that that was the best way to do it. I've always believed that. I, however, now believe that this is an opportunity for me to help this city. I was president of Stevenson House. I also served on the CDBG Committee, which gave quite a bit of money to the Palo Alto Housing Court. Housing for first responders is a very interesting concept, because they, we need houses. I talked to some firemen. They have three kids. They're not going to live in an apartment someplace. We've got to solve that problem. The biggest problem with housing in Palo Alto is the cost of the land, and so we have to figure out how to get that under control. That has to be the solution, is to finding land that does not cost money. It's not the house. I've heard a lot of people talk about affordable housing, but at the same time, they're talking about adding a cost to a house. I just built one. I don't want to look forward, I want to move forward and make decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Stone.
Well, thank you, everybody, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you to Pan for putting this forum together. Thank you Sid Espinoza for moderating it, and especially thank you to my mother and my fiance, who are both teachers, but they're putting aside their lesson planning tonight to listen to us. Some have described this election as one of the most important elections in this city's history. Whoever gets elected this year will have a voice in critically shaping our city's future. I understand that growth needs to be planned, sustainable, and not outpace our city's ability to provide services, parking for our cars, adequate parkland for our residents. Palo Alto needs smart growth, not reckless growth. Martin Luther King said it best. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. My friends, tomorrow is today, and we cannot sit idly by and allow for unsustainable growth that only continues to exacerbate our traffic, parking, and housing costs. I am in this race in order to ensure that our children grow up in a city that puts values ahead of dollars, nature's flora and fauna ahead of urban convenience, and the residents' needs ahead of special interests. The needs are urgent, and the time to act is right now. And so I ask you, please, to elect me to be your voice to City Council, and I promise you I will work tirelessly to always put your needs first. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. I hope that you will all join me in three particular thank-yous. The first is to Pan. If you in this room or watching at home are not involved in your neighborhood association, please reach out and get engaged. All across the country and around the world, people connect to their community, often most directly connecting with their neighbors and finding out what their concerns are and how to work together to make our community better places. And here in Palo Alto, we have had a long history of very active neighborhood association support. But times change, and we've had a lot of people moving in and out, and we've had some disconnects with some of our more recent neighbors getting engaged in the workings of Palo Alto. And through sort of a resurgence in the vibrance of our neighborhood associations, which some of our community leaders are working so hard to do, we can engage everybody in this community. So I would just like to thank Pan for continuing that hard work and this conversation. Sherry Furman and Nat Glankoff, in particular, have been doing extraordinary work for years and years and years. So I hope you'll join me in an applause for Pan, both for the work that they do every day and tonight. Second, thank you for the folks in this room and watching at home. The fact that you care enough to be engaged and to listen and to participate and to challenge our leaders and potential leaders is, of course, what creates an incredible vibrancy in our civil society. And I thank you for that. It may seem commonsensical in what you do, but many people choose not to. So please make sure that you continue to do that work, please make sure that you vote, you can encourage others to vote as well, and that you stay engaged. So a round of applause for everyone who came tonight. And then finally, public service is, of course, a great honor, a great responsibility. And honestly, sometimes it's really tough. And the fact that our fellow residents have stepped forward, whether you agree with everything they said or not, and put themselves on the line to say, "I would be willing to lead and give up part of my life to try to make our community a better place," really is something to acknowledge and applaud. So I hope you will join me in applauding all of the candidates who stepped forward. Thank you so much for coming. Have a good night.